Buddy, welcome to the Nelson City Council meeting, January 2022. To start our business off today, let's go ahead and have a word of prayer. If you would leave us, Stephen.
Sure. Dear God, Lord, we just thank you for this day and we thank you for this new year, 2022. We just invite you to give us your wisdom, your discernment, and your knowledge in all things that pertain to this city, and we ask that you would watch over the city council and the mayor, in Jesus' name.
Thank you. James, will you do the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I have a few things to say. John's speaker, just let you know. Okay, can I get a motion to approve our agenda?
I need to, I need to do an amendment to the agenda. I'm going to be adding, under department reports, D, heritage plumbing repair at the maintenance building.
It's an emergency.
An emergency repair.
Can I get a motion to approve the amendment being added?
I'm like motion to approve the amendment, heritage plumbing.
I'll take it.
Right, right, favor? You don't ask, thank you. I'll make a note here. Next up is the approval of the minutes from the December the 6th meeting. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes from the December the 6th meeting?
A motion that we approve the minutes for December the 6th, 2021 meeting.
You have a second?
Thank you.
Nathan, thank you. All in favor? Who knows? Okay, we have a new council member being sworn in this evening, Will Taylor, I want to say welcome, if you would like to come forward and...
If you want to stand at the podium, I can just do it from here. All right. And he will raise your right hand. I do solemnly swear that I will faithfully perform the duties of council member of this city and that I will support and defend the charter thereof as well as the Constitution and the laws of the state of Georgia and of the United States of America. If you do so solemnly swear, please say "I do."
I do.
Thank you. But you're meant to re-swear.
We normally do, but I don't, if you don't want to, come on, Buddy.
Come on, man.
You can just stand where you are.
Yeah, just standing.
Okay.
Get out of here.
I'm gonna go say "I do," it was fine.
All right, just raise your right hand. I do solemnly swear that I will faithfully perform the duties of the council member of this city or mayor of this city and that I will support and defend the charter thereof as well as the Constitution and the laws of the state of Georgia and of the United States of America. If you do so swear, please say "I do."
I do.
All right.
No, you leave. We'll keep paying.
Yeah. You know, every time I said "I do," it's coming in the door.
Next up is public appearance. Do we have any, anybody that would like to speak this evening? Ms. Kim, Kim Barr.
There. And to start out with, welcome, representing the beautiful Nelson Committee, we would like to welcome Will Taylor to the city council. We have worked with him on various initiatives and are excited about your new ideas and positive impact you'll have on the city council moving forward. All right, and then also wanted to thank Susan Johnston for her work on the council over the last term. Appreciate your support and look forward to seeing some non-city council capacity because we know she has a passion for this community too. Okay, so what you have before you is a proposal from the beautiful Nelson Committee for a, to help manage special events for the city of Nelson. And I'm just going to read the introduction here, because I know we got someone on the phone. Currently, the city of Nelson does not have a designated special events department or coordinator available who can establish, plan, and execute an annual special events program activities for city residents. The beautiful Nelson Committee was formed in part to assist promote and advance plans, programs, activities that benefit Nelson residents. The members of the BNC wish to offer their time and expertise to be a help to the city of Nelson in this area of need. And we have listed out some of the benefits that we feel that we could bring to this particular activity. And I believe there's actually already budget set aside for activities like this. So when we were talking about budget for this, we were thinking that per event, and these are just some ideas for events, it'd be 1,000, per event, 6,000 annually if we just did six events. And this would pay for any needed printing, mailing, notices, banners, and then, of course, anything would be approved before, you know, we move forward. Does anyone have any questions about that? In addition, there's a line item about a quarterly newsletter.
I'll address it. I'll also ask the council to, to give you their, their thoughts. We have never, I have never since I've been mayor turned down support from the city or residents here. Anybody that's wanted to help has been more than welcome to help. This conference here, she comes in and donates time weekly just about to, to the museum. Keith Johnson's helped with setting up our, our website, and we've had other people that's, that stepped up in our community when we had movies on. So as far as the dollar amount, that's something that we really need to look at. I know, are we done with our budget this year already?
Yeah, I mean, we're done. Again, I mean, we can plan, but we're, we can make adjustments or whatever. Well, we do have money, you know.
Yeah, I know.
We were doing the movie in the park and stuff.
I like having the Easter thing. I, I loved having the movies in the park. We did see a lot of people come out for that when we, when we had them at what, cold or too awful hot. And I like giving back to the community in that aspect. I would say that isn't, for me, I, I don't want to turn events over to a committee that's, you know, an outside committee, but I'm not turning down your help.
Okay.
If you guys, I, I like the Easter thing, and you can start with one event. If everybody here is okay with that, you guys good with that, maybe starting with Easter? Seeing, let's meet, let's have a, and I'll meet with you, we'll have maybe James or William or Martha, somebody, we can, a couple of us can meet with you. Get your ideas, find out, you know, get your budget, what you want, and then we can communicate it back to the rest of the council, and let's do it in a timely manner to where we have time for them to look at it.
Okay.
So let's just start with, let's start with Easter. Easter's coming up.
Okay. Great.
And then we can move forward from there. I appreciate all the work you guys have done as far as, as far as your flower planting and stuff like that. I, I like flowers, so, you know. I do, I, I know that Keith called me, and I'll, I'll say this here for everybody, Keith called me about the meeting. I don't feel like, because I'm, I'm the mayor, I, I don't feel like I can just come in and be at that meeting and give input on a committee that I, that's not mine, right?
Right.
So if you bring me an idea, if you bring me your budget, I'll work back with the council and we'll do, get it approved. I think everybody on this council wants, wants to do good things for the city of Nelson and the residents here. And we want to love on them, we want to give back to them, and we certainly have the opportunity to do that.
And we would like to offer more support because we have some expertise and more support that can help the city council out because, you know, everybody's got jobs.
Well, I mean, it is, and I mean, like I said, planting the flowers, it's a nice and I, I appreciate that, and I know that when spring comes, they're going to be beautiful. So, and I, I look forward to that, so.
And then there was also, so on the C item on this proposal, there was the quarterly newsletter for the city, and then there, I think you probably already have a budget for something like that.
I do, and I, COVID kind of shut me down with that. I was going to do a quarterly newsletter. I, I have spoken with a couple of people about, about doing that, and I do plan on, I do plan on doing something quarterly. But I know that there's people that can't make it to the meetings, they're not comfortable making it to the meetings, they're elderly, that, you know, COVID, the way that it is, and then all the different things, people get sick and things, they're just not comfortable with it. So I do plan on doing a newsletter. I've got numerous calls on that. The first one probably won't go out until the first of March.
Okay, so I guess do you need some assistance from us to help out with that?
I was able to go and find a, a template, so I'm going to look at that and see what I need to do. I think I have information from Keith as far as how to bill, how to get the billing at a reduced rate and stuff, so.
Okay.
But I will, I will reach out if, if I do need, so.
Okay, so then the first thing we'll do is work on planning an Easter activity.
Yes, set up a meeting, set up a meeting time, Saturday's works really good for me because I work during the week like most of the rest of the time, but if it's Saturday morning, that would be great. I would be more than happy to, to, to maybe get a couple council members or a council member to come down and meet with us and we can...
Awesome.
We digest it.
That helps the A part.
We did, we did, so, yeah, there's a lot of, there's a lot of room for, for doing some stuff like this.
Assistance.
Yes.
Okay, awesome, that's great. Okay, and so then there was just one other item that we had a question about, and it is part of unfinished business, 9F, uses for city-owned properties. We weren't, we saw the, the item, the topic for discussion and the, the attachment that went over locations, desirability of new city hall and community garden. What is the exact, what, can you give us a little bit more information about how this is supposed to, this discussion would impact the root design?
Root design, so here, here's the deal with root design, and I, and so I've gotten a couple phone calls today, or this week and then last week, from No Pickings. And here's the deal, Root Design is coming in, he's taken all of the renderings that we have, he's looking at them. This council will meet with a special session, a work session. We're going to talk with him and let them, after reviewing these, these renderings, let them know what our vision for the city is. It, it's a work session. He's going to take away what the council's vision is, looking at also the renderings that we have, and he's going to put something together to bring back to the council for them to review. And then the council can say, yeah, we love this, or we don't like this, or hey, we'd like to see some more green space here, you know, so it's a work in progress, and, and it'll be done, I know that he's planning on polling the citizens as well, that'll be taken into account as well. And then he'll come back to the city with that information, the council will meet with him again, and then he'll ultimately put together a design for our city.
Okay, and so the, so meeting with the citizens of the community, that will be balanced out with the vision for the city council?
The way that I see that happening is that you guys will come to the meetings and, and you, you'll be a part of the work session, you'll hear what the council has to say, you'll hear what Root Design has to say. He'll poll everybody, it won't just be the committee that you guys have, he'll poll everybody in, in the city, and then he'll take that information that he gets back and he'll come back to the council and he'll say, hey, 54% of your citizens would like to see more sidewalks, 23% of your citizens would like to see additional playground equipment, stuff like that. Same way that it's done with the work in progress out of the North Georgia Regional Commission. He'll poll the city folks that live inside the city, and then he'll come back to the council with, hey, here's, here's a, here's a list of things that they'd like to see broke out by percentage.
Okay, and I think the other question is the expectations for city hall, that's not supposed to, is that going to be a part of the comprehensive park plan, or there's just expectation for maybe a placeholder, because it seems like that would be a separate budget?
Because, so that's there, so he will know how to plan the, the overall design for the city.
Okay, so it'd be a placeholder, basically, not considered part of the same budget.
No, it's just he'll know not to develop that area or develop, or to develop if we decide to keep the city hall and renovate it, so, but that's what that is.
Okay.
Does anybody else want to add anything to that? You guys agree pretty much with what I've said, did I say it correctly?
Basically, it's just for everybody on council to sit and decide, like the question of city hall. I know the mayor's in favor, well, I've heard I am, we don't have everybody else feels that. Everybody else may say, we don't want a new city hall, so then Mr. Root would know X number of square foot or acreage over here is free for this design, or it's set for that. Are we putting up a building that we may need to figure sidewalks will end here, everything will tie in eventually here. Most of the items on here, we need to figure out how to allocate properties.
Yeah, and, and I know that, I've had a couple of phone calls about the city, about city halls. The benefits of another city hall, a newer city hall, would be that we could have more space for a, a community center, we'd have more space, did with small, a room for a library, maybe a couple computers. There'd be people in the city that don't have that. We would have room for, maybe to keep records in for our museum, you know, we could have, we could have a space for a museum, so. There's, there's benefits to it, and, and if it, if, there's grants out there for it, and, I mean, if we could get grants and we can, we could get it funded, I think it would be a great thing to have. And, and I know there's a lot of people inside Nelson since I've been here for the first four years that said, hey, we really would like that rec building, we want a rec building, you know, we want somewhere to meet, we want somewhere to have birthday parties and things like that. So, but again, it'll be, it'll be up to the council to look at the spaces that we have and, and look at our dollars and look at the budgets, and hopefully we'll be able to get someone with a decision on that.
Okay, and then, so I appreciate you guys additional feedback on that, so we could better understand. And then the beautiful Nelson Committee is planning to meet on Sundays prior to the Monday city council meetings, and honestly, anyone beyond the beautiful Nelson Committee is welcome to come and talk about any of the agenda items that would be coming up on, on the Monday night meeting. So that, I just wanted everyone to be aware, if you are interested.
Is the beautiful Nelson Committee a political committee, or is it, or is it a beautiful Nelson Committee, like enhancing, like helping out old people that need their yard mowed or plant and flower? What, what exactly is that?
All of the above. Basically, it's anything to improve this community, and I think that that is separate activities and then working with city council, on specifically items that would be beautification of the city of Nelson. Like, for this agenda, the comprehensive car plan, that's a really important thing that we would like to see for beautification of the city. So we would be more interested in talking about those particular types of items that are associated with beautification.
Okay.
Yeah, but, yes, okay, yeah. So it's mostly, we want, and we want to support our community.
Understand.
Supporting our community is supporting our council.
I just wanted to kind of know where you guys were coming from, because I, you know, I, I...
Honestly, we're still learning.
Gotcha.
We just formed over the last six months, and we're still formulating who we want to grow up and be.
I, I will say this for myself, I, I, I won't be at the before meeting, and the reason being is, is because those meetings for me as the mayor is, is setting an agenda, working through that agenda with my, with the council. And there, my thoughts to them or regarding the agenda needs to go to them first, okay? So, but...
That's, that is perfectly fine. Thought was that it might be an open forum for, for the community to have conversations about the things that we've seen come out in the agenda items.
And we do, yeah, we do encourage you guys to come, I know that every, nobody here has a problem with anybody coming and speaking that I know of, I mean, we, we allow community involvement, we've allowed, you know, people to bring their ideas and, and so forth when we have these meetings, so, and including work sessions. We, we take all kinds of, you know, feedback from, from the community, so.
And then in case, you know, people can't make it on Monday nights and wanted to have somebody present some information.
Got you, okay.
That's the other purpose of that.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. I appreciate it, Kim.
Appreciate it.
Anybody else have anything?
Thank you for allowing us to come.
Hey, thank you for coming.
I would say our biggest sunny house, I thought that was very cute.
I did, I did, I have got a lot of feedback, I got, yeah, I got a lot of emails back on that event, and they were like, oh, we didn't realize that was happening, and, and I need to do a better job at communicating that to the, you know, do a better job communicating. So I think that's maybe the goal of committee, being able to put a flower out.
I would like to say that, because I haven't been here in the past couple weeks, just seeing the progress of the sidewalks going in in this little area here.
Yeah, nice, isn't it?
It looks good. It's going to look great when it's done.
I think it started when you were here.
Yeah, so, just, just the progress of it and just the overall vision of having the cord, you know, connecting sidewalks, I think is, I think it's great, I think it's a move in the right direction.
Okay, next up is going to be our department report, so Mr. Downey, if you could come up and give us your, deliver us your...
Okay, she put it in backwards, which is okay, it's my fault.
I literally read it like five minutes ago.
I, I believe you because that's when you responded to my email, so.
It's very annoying. That's what makes you do it.
We did have two accidents within the city, which is very rare. One was right here at Kennesaw Avenue, Highway 5, with a cement truck. We had their roadway shut down just, I don't know, for about an hour, I guess.
Was there any casualties in that?
There wasn't, and there was other pending stuff that was going on with the investigation. And then we had one that wanted to take out the fence at the park, which we further investigated that and I believe handled that situation, and then we got a sick call off of Dogwood Pass where a citizen asked me to check into it because they hadn't seen the homeowner in a while, and she was actually in the hospital. But, okay, she was, okay, so that's a good thing. So other than that, any questions from the audience, or?
Yeah, good. Have you heard any more on the cameras yet, any news on that?
I've not. I believe right now they are in the engineering phase of, like, where to strategically put it up. I know we threw out the, the locations, but I think now they're actually locking everything down, and it'll be kind of like a mass throughout the county when they come out to do it. I don't think they want to do like one camera, you know, at a time, so.
Okay.
With 30, 35 maybe-ish across the board for the entire county, on top of the, the 30 or so that we already have, they're going to come back out, and it'll be like a phase two type thing where they'll come out and do them all at once.
Got you. Okay.
That it?
That's all. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you for your effort, sir. Next up is the mayor report. I'm like Miranda, I really like seeing the, the sidewalks and stuff coming together there. That was just, just saying that we had paid the last invoice that came out from the... We do have a chain board in here, but that's written in. That's just an update saying that invoice came in and we paid it, that was the second charge. Okay. We made our, they made our, we paid our...
That's our last one.
Huh?
Last round.
No. Yeah, so we did, we made, this is the second payment, correct, Kelsey?
Yes.
Okay, so we've made the second payment to Armbish Construction for our sidewalks. Anybody have anything on that? I haven't had anything but good feedback on, on what I've seen, other than, hey, it's taking a little long, but I mean, I've explained that it's, rain has, is what it is in Little Seattle, so. I don't know if anybody else has had, had anybody give them a call, but that's there. I wanted to take a minute to talk about the, the Recovery Act funds. I know, and I left my paper at home, I thought I could grab it when I grabbed my, my book, but I didn't, but we had talked briefly about doing, doing, making the trash service, the sanitation services mandatory citywide. We have 250, is it 257, $257,000 in the recovery fund right now? That's what I thought was it.
257, 242.
Okay, so I'm just going to say 257. We need to spend that relatively quickly to unlock the remaining 5K.
At least allocated.
Or allocated, so I'd, I'd like to know where, where you guys stand as council on, on doing that. I know before we were all good with, I think everybody on council was good with looking at doing trash service and making it mandatory for the city, cut down on some of the damage we're having to our roads and stuff, so. We'll start with William. William, how do you feel about it?
I don't think it's a bad idea at all if it's a service that we can keep in the house and have control over, you don't have trucks running up and down the road losing trash that end up having to pick up anyway.
Yeah, that's pretty much the way that, that event went last time. James, your thoughts?
Do you have a check and see how much garbage cans through the house you can put each one's on?
Yeah, they had been, and that's, that's part of the, one of the ones we'll talk about, the sanitation truck ones, but they, I think they originally had been 50 something. He said that they're having trouble getting them right now, so he would, he would recommend planning on closing them to 75 each, but I think, and I could be, I don't want to mistake some, I think some of that stuff could be, so you could use sploßments for some of it if it ended up or wasn't available during this time, but he said he didn't think it would be an issue, he just couldn't promise it, just because everybody's having trouble getting them right now.
Yeah. We can get updated pricing on that and maybe vote on, on making this thing here. Okay, then we can do that, too. We'll, we'll look at the pricing on it. My thoughts is, is if we can maybe use some of the 257,000, I know Miranda, Kelsey was talking with you, did, do you know if we can use any of that for Kennesaw and allocate that for the Kennesaw project and save some of our sploß?
Yes, actually, that's one of the things that I was going to actually recommend, just because stormwater is definitely an approved and the final will cover. If you've already planned the project and you've not paid for it yet, you can still, it, it, it works, even if you've planned the project, you already have it in place, which we've already started when we started construction, which is, we'll still use it, be able to use it for that project.
So...
Even though it was a project that was started before we had the funds.
Exactly. So we could take the remainder of that, I mean, ordering a truck, so it's going to take time to come in, but even if we ordered the truck and the cans, we could take the remainder of that, put it on Kennesaw and free up some of our sploß dollars to go towards, you know, parks and recs and things like that. I know we want to put equipment down here, the, the little kitty part, so.
Do you change that?
Honestly, in my opinion, no, not within the sploß, so the money that's allocated to transportation that would be remaining would still need to go to transportation as far as I know, but I, I can't remember how we've got that allocated and what...
The charity zip is tighter.
Yeah.
Can we use, can we use those extra dollars that we save in that and put towards maybe one of our shorewater projects that we have for Hillside?
Yes, and that's one of the things that, we know we have this big massive project, we know that we, it's going to cost us the funds. The easiest way for us to go ahead and say, hey, this is a project we've got going on, this is a project that we are already in motion with, to save and expedite it and be able, I would recommend honestly, any of the stormwater projects using those funds for that first.
Let me ask, well, let me ask you this, we have the money for a truck, and we can use sploß dollars for it.
In Jesus' name, because you've got...
What if we allocated the bulk of that, of this to...
Just throw it all out?
Just throw, well, I'd like, the other thing that I'd like to do, but we could take this 257 and just say, we could throw the bulk of it at that, at this Kennesaw project and open up the rest of the funds, which is what we want to do. We don't want to use those till 2026.
That's what I was about to say, so that would, that would clear it all up, that would open up that door to go ahead and submit it and say, this is our project, this is where we want to start, and we've already got the drawings, we've got everything that...
So we would just have to submit it?
Yes.
It has to be spent by 2026, that's correct?
Correct.
Like, our money has to be gone?
Yeah.
Saying for the nine-yard truck, it's actually available by the paperwork now, the 11 would have to be ordered.
Well, the thing about it is, is if we...
I think the one they had sitting there, somebody's already claimed, said there's, and I think UGA is trying to claim the X4 or 5 that are coming down, but I don't know if they've firmed it out yet or not, but the price is going to change in June, again, it's going to go up again.
What's the balance?
They will change. UGA will pay the...
Probably. The thing about it is, William, is if we take this 257 and we throw at the Kennesaw project, we still have sploß dollars available that we could do the truck with.
Yeah, with the clearing, we're talking about splitting it up and trying to get...
Well, it was originally, but, but in order to open that up, in order to open up the other 500,000, we can throw this at that, I mean, sploß dollars, sploß dollars, it's just, it's just how to, how to use it to where you're opening up. The other thing that I wanted to discuss with the council was the hazard pay for our, for our sanitation folks and also our maintenance. William, you were telling me that Woodstock was able to do maintenance, had hazard pay as well, right?
Yeah, they did it along with the, with the staff that actually took care of the buildings.
For the care's money?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Did sterilize the buildings and handled everything.
Yeah.
Was that the first one? Is that this one?
This one.
Okay.
The final losses.
So, and do you know what it was? Do you know what their, was it a thousand? That's pretty much consistent with the rest of them that we've checked, so sanitation and maintenance. Do you, council, did you have an issue with granting a thousand dollars to our sanitation and maintenance employees out of that Recovery Act money?
I don't have a problem with it.
So, William Taylor's a no, James a no, David's a no, Martha, Nathan? Can you hear us?
Nathan?
Did you hear the question about the sanitation, a thousand dollar payout to the sanitation and maintenance workers out of the Recovery Care Act? I, I was going around the table to see, to get everybody's opinion. Everybody was a yes. Say that again? It was our hazard pay, yes.
It's from the new grant money.
It's the new grant money? Are you good with that?
Yeah.
Okay. And since that, since that is, do we vote on that at the bottom or do you want to vote on that now?
Don't matter, it's a good one.
Okay, can I get a motion to pay the thousand dollars for the sanitation workers and to the maintenance workers out of the Recovery Act funds?
I make a motion that we pay a thousand dollars to the maintenance workers and sanitation workers out of the.
Care.
Care's Act.
I'll say it.
James, all in favor? Unanimous? Thank you. Second? I think there's a delay in everything. Thank you, Nathan. Okay, so.
Mayor Green, may I ask one question? Are we, what is the timeline on perhaps getting another truck?
It's in the, you all will get to it.
We're gonna, yeah, we're not quite there yet. We were just discussing sanitation for the city, but further down in here, we have, we have the dollars and stuff for that and talking about sanitation truck.
Okay, I can ask my question then?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, so we're good on that. If you want to go ahead and make a note to do that, you can do that out there. And I think I'm just gonna leave the rest of that until we get down there to it. Do you have any information on the slope? I know that we had talked about.
The change order.
Okay.
For the dirt.
For the dirt. Okay, we had talked about getting the dirt from Haycock, and then they came back and said, because they knew when they would need it, they could do it for one twenty-five below, which was a lot cheaper than what they had originally told us. And so I just made a management decision to go ahead and do that. That way it would be done, done when they needed it and we'd get it in, so. I don't think they have even gotten it.
Yeah, William, we didn't know we could get to it.
Yeah, that's what you had told me. And I, I do want to say that we did get a lot of feedback. I had some phone calls, I got a couple emails. They're thanking us for the city, doing the little Christmas thing for the kids and stuff. A lot of people are saying, hey, we hope it'll open back up so we can, we can enjoy it some more, so. Yes. Did we, did we get a thing back from Michael Kidd?
He did, he had all his dates for like at the end of this month, beginning of February, so if you want to wait and touch it to the work session in February. When the truck, it was literally, I know it emailed me, but it was like the last couple days of January, first few days in February. The email came in like right as I moved on that door.
Okay, so I'm gonna reschedule the work session. Michael Kidd has in-laws from out of the country in. He, we had, we had reached out to him. He can do the last couple of days of January or the first part of February. February's probably gonna be better for him. I don't think they're leaving right away, so are you guys good with scheduling that work session for the first part of February? I know we have a council meeting, we could do it maybe the Thursday after or?
Why don't I get the?
Week after that?
Why don't I get the dates? Because it was literally the first few days in February, it's all that he initially gave me. So, we didn't go any further than that.
Let's ask you if you could make it to somebody down and ask me if we can do it Thursday after. All right, and we'll get back with you guys on that. All right, the next up is gonna be finance with Mo and Miranda. Miranda, welcome back, we miss you.
Thank you, thank you. All right, so let's go over the bank balances first. General fund is eight hundred and fifty-one thousand, nine hundred and twenty-five. Special reserve three, that's the old Cherokee's splosts, sixty thousand, one hundred and eighty-six. We've been doing really well, trying to complete that with the projects we've got going on. Splosts four, five hundred and thirty thousand, six hundred and, seven hundred and sixty-three. Splosts two is four hundred and forty-three thousand, eight hundred and seventy-six. Splosts five is six hundred and twenty-two thousand, six hundred and seventy-nine. The cash fund reserve is one hundred and sixty-six, five hundred and forty-three. Once we receive our audit numbers back on that, we will do the transfer, the cash reserve policy that we have in place. And then splosts twenty twenty is four hundred and eighteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty, and then the grant is two hundred and fifty-seven thousand, two hundred and forty-two dollars, so. All right, so we just completed December, the month of December, so we should have a remaining budget of fifty percent or more currently. And we have twenty-two percent remaining in our revenue. In our overall budget, we have sixty-nine percent, sixty-nine point nine three percent remaining, so looking good, on track there. And revenues are coming in. I was surprised to see that we're at sixty-five percent collected, collection rate, and it's only January on the property taxes, so that's, that's pretty cool. Other than that, I don't really have anything else. Just moving right along.
Thank you very much. All righty, next up is gonna be, is gonna be D, the amendment for heritage plumbing, water repair. And I know you know more about this than I do.
This was just a repair estimate. The water line, underground water line maintenance department's leaking. We thought it was a toilet issue, like, we had it at City Hall a while back, and so the water bill last one was two hundred and forty dollars, I think, which is normally ten. The guy actually came down and said, since we've had the water shut off since before Christmas, I'm here to send the estimates. I think they emailed it like New Year's Eve. By the time we got in, they had actually combined it with the hose lining thing and moved in the line at the police department, so I had to separate it. So, the estimate to do that one was like fifteen hundred, but you can't get to it for a week or two, so that's why I figured I'd just put it in here and make it.
What the maintenance department is with that water right now?
Yes.
So.
Are they gonna put a complete new water line in? I think we did, in fact.
I think we did, and I think it was them, because he knew exactly where it was, so we didn't know exactly what's causing it.
It's installation of a new one-inch main water line, connect water services lines to the each of the city set meters, connect water service line to each point of the entry located at the building. I think the other one, when we did that, was where we separated.
They came out after that to repair it.
Oh, did they? They repaired, but they didn't run a new one, so this is for running a new one.
Yeah, because they'll do the, they'll change the water line at the old PD and put in a new line and a spigot thing. I think that one was six fifty, which they, that one here, I just wanted them off the same invoice, so we knew what was what. And just because that was over the thousand dollars, I just wanted it.
Let's go ahead and vote on that. Can I get a motion to approve the fifteen fifty for, for the repairs of water line at the maintenance building?
I make a motion.
Get a second?
Second.
All in favor? Unanimous? Or Nathan, are you good? Okay.
Yeah.
Unanimous, thank you. All righty. Next, we have unfinished business, price increase for Bobcat, for the Bobcat tool kit, so.
Yes, this one had gone from, and the original price that was approved is fifty-four thousand, eight hundred and seventeen, and which is the estimate that they had sent in was good through November. At the December meeting, it was approved beginning of December. We sent it the next day. He sent an email back. We've gone back and forth. He actually contacted Bobcat to see if they would honor it, and it was Bobcat that wouldn't. Because if you go back in, like, the actual estimate down through it, they had actually taken off some of the money for all of the attachments and the extras based on the original one, but the new one is fifty-seven thousand, nine hundred and fifty-three dollars. And we had all discussed this, so we did go ahead and order it. Everyone was okay with it. We just needed it recorded in the minutes. Did everyone was okay with it, because the price is supposed to increase again, I believe. So, we didn't want it to be a ten thousand dollar increase instead of a four thousand dollar increase.
So, for formality, we'll go ahead and do a motion to approve the fifty-seven thousand.
Or just do it fifty-eight.
Fifty-eight thousand to Bobcat. Can I get a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion that we approve the purchase of that Bobcat tool kit at fifty-seven thousand, nine hundred and fifty-three.
Can I get a second?
Second.
David? All in favor? Nathan? You good? Unanimous, thank you. Next up is Kennesaw Avenue, change order for the dirt for movable slopes.
I think we have to bring in a total of sixty loads. It was two with thirty loads each, I think, is what, because it centers, the invoices that came in. One was on December first, one was like, I guess, the fifteenth.
Okay, where's that at?
It's like towards the back.
Seven hundred and fifteen?
Yeah.
That's better. She told me it was one twenty-five, so they brought it.
The total on it is still, something of hundreds, maybe sixty loads total.
Okay. So, we've, we've got from Haycock for between one and one twenty-five.
He said it was a hundred, and he just went, 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 sure if you might get down in the quarry that day, because I talked to him, he was a salesman, he called him. And it was, it was raining, and then the machine, the trucks are in the quarry, and he said, we couldn't guarantee if we did it. They did, they needed it.
All right, do I need, so this is a change order. Do I need to get this approved?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead and get it approved. Can I get a motion to approve the change order for the field dirt for movable slopes for the seventy-five hundred dollars?
So, they've done, put in sixty more on?
Yeah, that was to get the slopes where it was movable for, yeah. And we were gonna originally get it from Haycock, but Haycock, I said, because it was raining, couldn't do it.
They did thirty loads on December first, so it looks like thirty loads on December fifteenth.
Say that again, Nathan?
If this was made from the lines, was it changed from the original valve or what?
It was, from what I understand, is it wasn't, it wasn't mapped out on Barry's, on Barry's original engineer drawings. I guess we didn't tell him that we wanted a movable slope, but when Ricky came in and said, hey, this doesn't look like we're gonna be able to get our lawnmowers of it, we started looking at it. James and I went out there and took a look at it, and then we, we talked about it at our last meeting, I believe, but we were gonna look for Haycock to be coming in to provide the dirt to grade it to mobile, to a mobile slope. And Haycock didn't know if they could, if or when they could get to the project. And in order to keep this one moving, we ended up allowing them to bring it in, and the loads were one fifteen.
I think they were, the slope on the original one was four one, and we needed it to be between a, I think, a two one and a three one, and to mow it.
Can I get a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve.
James, can I get a second? David, all in favor? Thank you. Unanimous. All righty, next up is the disposal, maintenance department zero term war, sealed bids or auction.
Okay, there's nothing in the packet for this. This is, the Nelson tractor offered us fifteen hundred for it. The auction company does a government auction, I believe in May, or we can do sealed bids. Ricky said he wouldn't mind hanging on to it, just for when the other movers are in the shop. It's one of those, if you have an extra mower, you don't need it. If you don't have an extra mower, you need it all the time, which is kind of what we ran into last year, several times. But it's, it's up to y'all. We can hang on to it as an extra. He has space for it as of right now. I don't know how much space we're gonna have when the Bobcat shows up. But again, the next auction, which I think is probably our best bet, isn't until May, so.
We have time to decide.
I would think so.
They could use it to mow less roughish ground and keep them tired of the used stuff.
Mm-hmm, yeah. I did tell him if it's gonna sit in there, that I don't want him licking on it every once in a while, so it's not just sitting.
It does need tires, I think.
I know that, yeah, one of them's looking really rough. So, that's one of those, if we're gonna hang on to it, then.
Yeah, if we're gonna hang on to it, we might want to look at the grabber tires, like what we have for Ricky's. Ricky said he really likes those tires, so.
We don't get a, it's another, yeah, the guy that, Justin Brown, actually gave Ricky the number for the guy that he uses, and then we barely have anything to vote himself for.
Would we put the grabber tires in, we would, that tire off.
Yeah, that's a good, yeah.
Yeah, there you go.
That's a good.
Yeah, because he said they weren't, they were supposed to last several years, so.
We did, on the same note, for, for talking about places historic, we did reach out to the land company. Kelsey found a name and number, Redman Holdings, we found an address and stuff, so she sent a letter for that. And we are looking at, still trying to find a good acre of property that, that's not inside the city, so we can put the dumpster, I mean, our sanitation truck and stuff like that.
Because the ones up there isn't, is inside the city, and it's just part, it's next to the stair company, you know, but they have four hundred and fifty acres.
Yeah, I did talk to the guy that, that, we had thought that he was gonna sell the piece of property that he bought, but he says no, he's actually gonna develop it, so that was kind of a dead end there, so. All right, so for right now, we'll look at holding it since the, since the next option's not till May, we can switch the tires out, and then, so.
You can go ahead and get the run flats and one, just swap them out then?
Yeah, that's what they, Ricky said they're probably not.
Oh, yeah, they do. I think they were, I think for the two of them, it was right at a thousand. Or is it Covet? I think they were running seven, eight hundred each, about.
He just said he doesn't slide when he hits those hills, and that's a good thing.
Oh, that makes it kind of fun.
All right, next up is gonna be the, the grant, SLFR F grant. Kelsey, I'm gonna let you talk a little bit about it.
Hold on about that. We've pretty much covered most of it in earlier. It's just deciding what we're gonna do with those funds. Because the D and E kind of ran together. I just didn't know. There was an email that came in, just basically giving us timelines, like, there is a reporting period that's coming up. We have to report on this?
I'm gonna reach out to.
April thirtieth.
Okay.
Like, that's a hard April thirtieth.
So, let's go ahead and make, and make some decisions. Do you guys want to, want to just take the sanitation and the maintenance hazard pay and then take everything else and put it towards Kennesaw to go ahead and unlock the funds? It's, it's basically just using splosts money or using grant, grant money, right? So, it evens out, but, but it will unlock the rest of those funds.
I don't know, David, like.
Y'all good with that? William, James, Nathan, David? Say that.
I was still on there, we used that old splosts, we were trying to do that.
Yes, we are. What we're gonna do is, is we're gonna use that old splosts money, we're going, it goes back into transportation, so it'll, we can use that on some of our projects that we have coming up after Kennesaw finishes. We've got School Street, and then we've got Hillside. And it'll, and it'll, we only have, we have to unlock the rest of the five hundred thousand before, before April the thirtieth, so this will do that. Okay.
It'll give us something to report.
Yeah, it'll give us something to report, okay.
So, they're giving a thousand dollars to them, and then use the rest of Kennesaw?
Yeah, the stormwater, and then, yeah, and then the next would be the sanitation. Have you locked that edition?
So, just to recap that, we're gonna go ahead and, and do the hazard pay for sanitation and maintenance, and we're gonna take, and we're gonna report, do we have, we just take what we have and report back in there, Miranda?
Yes, and just take the overall price of that project and report it, and if they ask questions about it, just say that it's, you're gonna offset, if, if there's anything to offset, it'll be offsetting with splosts. Because you're gonna use that, that project as a whole. And then they may ask for supporting documentation, like plans and that kind of thing. thing.
So that's a good project to do.
That's a, that's exactly it.
Okay, and, um, can, or, so can you help with getting that?
Absolutely.
I'll be nice with great.
Yeah.
Sure.
All right, good deal, so that's, that's awesome. And then, um, the next step is the sanitation truck, and Kelsey, I know you've got some prices on that as well.
We got quotes on two different trucks, one's an eight yards, and even one is an 11 yard. The eight yard is 124,000, and keep in mind, these prices keep drastically increasing. I believe when this started, this truck was like high 90s, and it was like 100 and 610, now it's 124. They're supposed to increase again in June. So this is the small one, this one, I think it's the ones that Jasper just got. They're 124. The big ones, like the one that we currently have, is running 163.5. And these are the 2022 price. So if you wait until June of this year, the prices will increase again, because I think that's something to do with emissions or something, he like, he went through it in the email.
So the small trucks, 124, that's a nine, is that nine?
Eight yards.
Eight yards.
And they're, and they're both non-CDL.
Yeah, I saw that. Um, so the, so you got an eight yard and an 11 yard?
Yeah.
And 11 yards, 163.
They have recommended, like, when he came out and looked, he recommended doing the smaller one, even if they ran that one around the pickups, came back and dumped in the other one, and drove that one to the dump. You don't have less trips going back and forth, and, or running both at the same time. It just depends on how much you've been shooting, how many tons you're picking up. And if you end up doing the whole city, then you need both trucks going. But we also need more than one truck for if we have bars in the shop, like we did a couple of years ago, and it was out for like three weeks, and they were using the sanitizer, the maintenance guy's truck, which did more than very well, and a dumpster.
So maintenance, I know we didn't want a maintenance on the one we have.
It's currently heavy for regular maintenance, which I've been in touch with him to find out the best place to get it done, because the place in Serra Metallica is kind of slipping out of every possible chance they have.
Do we have any issues with it?
No, not that I know of. Well, they didn't fix the PTO thing, but they were just fixing, because this guy, Andrew, works for another company, and they post-rep, he sent out here where the boat guy is, and they fixed it on site, it was like a few or something stupid. Like, we had taken it back down to like 10,000.
Oh my gosh.
Don't lose some work on the biggest trucks.
It's hard to find some work on the trash truck, just because it's a sanitation truck.
So what's your, what's your thoughts on, on the sanitation truck? The, how do you feel about the larger versus the, or the smaller versus the larger? I know that we've had, this one's in good working condition, we've had a lot of work done to it, so we would keep it, and that's, you know, obviously.
What a state of that, maybe they should make it usable today.
I'm sure it'd like it, and we talked about it some, and.
I mean, the smaller versus the larger. I mean, I agree, we can get it out of it.
We're having a transition about the truck here.
It's in that, I thought it was in the packet, I think.
I get the body top. It doesn't really tell you.
I'm sure, I'm sure they can give us, like, more.
What the chances are.
And I wouldn't know if I was looking at it.
If we're gonna look at bigger truck, we may take a Cummins engine with Allison transmission.
The problem right now is, I mean, I agree with you, but the problem is, is just finding a period.
You said, you said, you said a Cummins engine with what? An A.
Allison transmission.
We could communicate that back to the SCAN, see if they confirm something like that. Not sure what this one, this one doesn't really say what it has in it.
I don't know what this is.
So we can find out. So, so which, which truck do you think that, that we would, um, that we would wanna look at for the city if we were gonna be using the truck to, um, using the city services man, you know, make it mandatory? Would we wanna go with the eight, or would we want, you're looking at about $40,000 difference, 39,000 for a bigger truck?
How many houses is the city servicing that?
How many houses is it? I'm saying about 220 bills or 240 bills out right now, so roughly, yeah, it's roughly half.
How's the 11, you said, currently how 11 yard truck?
I'm thinking it's, I'm going from that. Whatever one we have, they don't.
I think it's the 13, and we gotta go down to it a lot.
And it could be, because there was something with it, they don't make it anymore.
And its size is adequate?
Yeah.
Yeah, because he doesn't dump it every day.
If you're doubling, then you want a replacement that's near to the same as you could, then I would think.
Yeah.
I mean, that, that would, that's my, I mean, you're looking at 40,000 dollars more, but if something goes down with that one, he's not having to make multiple trips to the, to the dump, so. So the one six.
As far as obligation, if the bigger one should rise to get it along.
Okay, that's, that's good information. Um, Kelsey, could you make a note to, to reach back out, what Emma does, anything about the Cummins, um, the Cummins, um, tran, uh, the Cummins engine with the Allison transmission, see if they have anything with those in there, and if not, what this one has in it? Okay. Did we have the update on the cans or not?
Yeah, it's in the, you always go through them.
We'll get some additional information and get it out on, on what's in, what's in the 11 yard, so, so I'm gonna go ahead and say that right now, we're looking at the 11 yard for 163, and we're gonna find out what kind of, um, engine it has and what kind of transmission it has. Yes, Susan?
Yes, I have another question. I'm all for it being mandatory, I think that would be great for the city. My question is, prior to us getting another truck, where we're going to house the trucks and the extra cans, where, where will these be kept?
So we've not ordered it today, and we are looking, we're actively looking for these property.
Okay, will we have that property before we get an extra truck or, and cans, or, I mean, we're, is, do we have an alternate place to put them in, in the meantime, until we find something?
We are actively looking, yeah.
If we're doing it $1,000, we're gonna go with that one hours, but.
I think you checked, you need to. Okay, well, let's do that, we're in a backup minute, I, I didn't realize it required for.
The grant, the grant.
We're gonna do a vote, we discussed it, we've sent a vote on it.
Yeah, let's back up and do that. So, um, I know I asked if everybody was in agreement, so I'll recap again. Sanitation and maintenance hazard pay, $1,000 per employee, and then we're gonna take the remaining dollars, which is, two, that's 4,000?
Maybe 53.
So 253,000 would go towards the Kennesaw Avenue project.
I think we just voted on that.
We didn't vote, we talked about it, so that's why we're doing a vote.
You agreed to vote, you didn't officially say, ah.
Yeah, we wanna, we wanna, we wanna, yeah, we wanna make a vote, because it's a lot of money, so. So can I get a motion to approve that?
I make a motion to approve.
James, and can I get a second?
Second.
David? All in favor? Nathan? Unanimous, thank you. Okay, now the next step is, um, so we're gonna, we'll come back, we'll put sanitation, um, the sanitation stuff back on for, for next week. Anybody know of any properties for sale? We'd like an acre here in the city.
I thought you said outside.
Or outside the residential, yeah, it's outside, it's not in the city, but I mean, yeah.
There's all the property out there on Pickens Street going towards like.
Yeah, that's where I'm.
That's where we were looking at.
I've sent a letter.
Yeah, we've, we've actually reached out.
Sometimes companies tell me.
I won't call, I won't call him, I have.
Everything going out, Old Nelson, is Rappi Holding, it's like, everything. It's literally 450 acres.
Who's that?
Some guy in Atlanta.
We found a name and number from Kelsey, she, she emailed him, so.
Right, some of the actual.
They have a lot of this. Going towards, uh, out of town that way, I don't know, they have a lot of property in that.
Marvel Company, it's like Walter Davis, Rio, and Evan, and there's some, Emress. I think it's four different ones, but they, everything else that's surrounded is in by them.
You big deal to check?
I'm, I'm, I've talked to Kelsey today, I'm gonna try to give him a call, and just touch base with him this week. See if he's got CDL in there, so.
But I don't know, there's plenty of trash, there's rubbish, there's a ring trash.
But it can't be an ongoing thing, and we need to have just a solution in the city.
We need a place to, to finish in, place to put our stuff, and maybe even a bar in there to be able to work on stuff. Okay.
Yeah, that's true, yeah, maybe, maybe even two.
The letter I sent that guy, I said two.
Two, okay, good deal. All right, um, next up is gonna be uses for city-owned property, and since Mr. Taylor initiated that, I'm gonna let you, I'm gonna let you start it off.
Basically, like I touched on before, some of these areas, we need to decide is what being done there, what's gonna stay there, what looks like the best thing, like I said, House Council filled about a city hall, so I guess we can go down, wanna do three, four, five, if you want to. So everybody feels about, look, do we wanna explore and do a city hall? Seriously.
Well, probably, uh, the bit of the future, I don't see no reason for one until everything else gets finished, and according to anybody else, any exits into the city link, the bill. I think we're gonna have to, on Canada, the property right back here, but we're gonna have to. Did they come over and survey this yet? I know we was up there surveying.
The old survey that shows the back corner on their lot.
And he's not willing to resign it either.
And our.
Because he's got business.
Septics are on their property.
And if he gets, um, if he gets, you know, I, I don't wanna talk about his business, but I, I understand where he's coming from, so. Plus, I mean, you know what, the, the city, the city deserves, uh, people here deserve a place for, to have a, a recreation center, be able to go to. I, I know that we've got, this back end is falling off out here, we could re, we could renovate it, but still and all, even if we have to do something with, um, you know, septics and stuff, it's gonna, it's gonna be a, a thing. We can sell this place, we could build another city hall, we could improve our, we could do a lot of things for the city. Could improve our, our museum, we could, um, have a small room that was designated for library with a couple of maybe, uh, computers in there for people that, that can't afford it. We have kids that go to school and don't have computers, you know, they could come down and use them, but.
Depending on where you're located.
You know, we, we talked about this years ago on the council.
Yeah.
Wherever the city hall, it has to stay in Dickens County.
That's, if you did it in there, it's mine would have to stay in Dickens.
That's really the only spot that we could do it, is, is over here at the, um, on the hill. We could do it there, but we have a lot of room there, that could be graded and done, and, I mean, you've got, you've got the room for it, and I think we, we're looking at grants and stuff, Kelsey's looking at some grants.
Other things in there, other than government usage, you could apply for grants.
And it would cover that portion of it, like, like the museum, um, like, uh, the library and, and the recreation, you know, area. So, um, I mean, that's just a.
Oracle.
Yeah.
Oracle.
Yeah.
That's what you really wanna do with.
So William, what's your thoughts on it?
Well, like I said, it's, I'm in favor of it, just from the conversations we've had, like I said, I think you could put a lot of good stuff there, talk about tying it in with the park system, like we talked about, you could prime location to go ahead and plan your bathrooms, for youth during events, types of things like that. I said, win, win all the way around.
David, what's your thoughts?
I agree.
Do you like it? I do. Martha?
I agree.
Um, Nathan, what's your thoughts?
I feel that's fine.
Okay, so that's something that we can definitely look at, and when we, when we have our, when we have our needs, so.
It'll just be a matter of picking a parcel around a rough size, and you could even use, depending on the tight building, you're probably looking at two stories, uh, hall above, wreck below, use your foundation, grading, planting, all that kind of good stuff.
Yes, um, you had something, Keith?
Uh, yeah, a couple things on the list here, regarding the city hall, the committee was meeting, uh, we had a suggestion, the way it's done in many other cities, is have a feasibility study done in advance to, on a, on something that expensive, probably a couple billion dollars to, at least to build a building, under, it has to be built under federal code, building codes, and so maybe the city might wanna look at hiring someone to do a feasibility study, uh, on, on something that large.
Yeah, I think buy-in was the first thing, and then, then definitely.
And, uh, like the, uh, meeting rooms whatnot could be included in the, in the park plan, a possible separate building for that as well, to have a melon building or some kind of building for, uh, having people have parties or whatever.
That's what the rec, that was what we're talking about, so it's a rec, what they, what the people here call a rec, a rec center is, is where they can go and they can, they can have birthday parties or things like that, so you could use it if you needed to meet or whatever, I mean, but I guess it'll have multi uses to it, so. But thank you. All right, um, so number two, Mr. Taylor?
Uh, the community garden, I know, I've done some planting and stuff there, is everybody good with that location? I mean, we need to let him know, this particular parcel's already, has a usage for that, huh?
Oh, yeah, it, it's fine for, for now, you're not looking at it. It'll take, with, with the way that you have to spend government money, it takes a while.
Oh, I was talking about just letting Mr.
Yeah.
I don't know, and we're designing.
He'll have several, yeah.
That area's already accounted for a use.
Yeah.
A couple other small subjects on that, do we need to explore doing a hold harmless? I guess that would be a legal question, between the city and set up, I guess, an organization or whatever, then I know that you had mentioned doing rental of some of the lots and stuff, we probably need to look at a, a plan for.
I had that already, I just haven't presented it yet, I got, I got.
I figured you were probably in the planning stage.
Right, well, I mean, basically gonna do identical to what they're doing at Woodstock, spoke with that guy, basically gonna copy their format, 'cause it works.
Good idea.
It'll pay for the water.
It's gonna be pretty straightforward. Nothing, nothing major.
I'm in, I wanna follow that.
Again, I said, I've just talked to the people I know about the hold harmless, just in case, and the way people are out there these days, oh, you used a certain type of fertilizer above my property. It's funny, but all kinds of stuff like that.
Just looking for reasons. Whenever you have more, I guess, like.
So we already know, so the, so the, the council's given him a, we've given him the right to use, um, the parcel of property where the old, um, the old police building is at, here, if you know exactly where it is, is that Dogwood Blue Ridge? So, yeah, Dogwood Blue Ridge, um, and he's gonna use that parcel there, that's, there's nothing in it to, to do, um, gardening, community garden. And he's gotten his, um, he's worked with, uh, Woodstock to look at how they actually set that up. So it pays for itself, in other words, you don't have Steve Johnson paying for the water for everybody to water their garden with, it's, uh, it'd be, uh, so much for plot for the year, I believe, is what you said, and that would cover the water, the water usage. So what William Taylor's asking is, is do we need to have, it would've been a contract with everybody, or would it, something he would hand out and they would sign off on, or?
Whatever, the best way to handle it, is they set it up as his organization, or?
Yeah, let's just look, I think we can look into kind of.
Since it's a community garden, would we need that? And it sits its own city property.
That's what I'm thinking, that it may not be necessary, but let me confirm that.
I mean, you don't have any houses below it, really, you water there, but, and, and with it being city property, I wouldn't.
But whatever, maybe, I'll just look at what would be necessary as far as, if there's anything that needs to be.
I know there's, there's a difference if you're renting property from somebody versus I know there's, there's a difference if you're renting property from somebody versus it being city property, so.
Yeah.
You know, it being the landlord, so we wouldn't necessarily have to have an agreement, you would just have to have, um, just terms and conditions, basically. Your responsibilities like, or for the water and stuff like that.
Right.
So would you draw a contract up with that, or would it just be, um, something in writing within?
I mean, I would, I would think that it would be more so if the primary use is. Based on who's kind of, yeah, the community, but also who's operating, kind of the person, the entity that you're using to operate, would be who the city would have an agreement with. But as far as whether there needs to be any further protection, I don't know that it would necessarily apply that like every citizen would have to sign something out, I don't think so, that would be.
I do really think it would be with the organization.
Right, that's what I'm thinking, but let me just confirm that, whether that would be.
But I'm gonna even think that is an organization, I think that's just, um, that's just a group of citizens getting together wanting to do a plot and do some, some gardening, so.
Yeah, but they'll honestly will probably be nil.
Yeah.
Cause even the one at the park with you, it might be fifteen, twenty bucks, if that, it's usually ten dollars.
You can ask, I mean, I, and I do a lot of leases, like for, for, um, these towers and stuff, landlords, but I, and I know the city's a little bit different, but I don't, I don't think we would need to. Given the location of it and the fact that we own it, it's citizens that's doing a garden and all.
Yeah.
It could be, you can ask Jeff to get back with us though.
Yeah, no, we'll get to it.
Okay, so I'll make a note here, you guys are gonna get back with us in a minute. Okay, next is, uh, the key part relocate or refurbish in current location. Um, then I'll start this one off, um, I know that with one of the last meetings we had, um, I, I got a, a lot of phone calls personally. About this part, they, they would like to see this park refurbished.
Yeah.
So, um, we had talked about it in our last meeting, that we do have some extra land there that we can fence off.
Found the survey.
Did you? Good deal, so we can, we, she found the old survey, if we had to, um, if we've gotta do some land, you know, filling in to make it level, we could, we can look at, um, we've got books here, we can look and see what ki, kinda stuff we want. I know that we have Play Nation and stuff like that here that's local, but that's all wood, it requires maintenance, um, they were worried about that, cause I had one of them, had one sitting in my yard rental, so. I really like what we have down here.
We're not gonna get splinters, but you can add on to it, if possible.
We're gonna try to find something that has a pretty wide range.
Yeah, like something that's not just kitty, but, but will.
We just call it kitty park.
One little fellow in the forum said they want more swings.
Yeah, they did that. I, I, I went to, um, Elige, I saw one in Elige and they, they have one that's, that they have A D H, uh, A D D compliance swings. Um, so I'd like to see something like that added, where, where you can.
That'd be an easy spot, cause you've got a pretty mild grade to begin with.
Yeah, and then I saw where they, their newer park, it just, it goes straight up, it's just a big tower and off of it you have the bars and slides and the slide, the slides really don't take up much room because they spiral. So, there, there's a lot you can do in a small space with the right equipment. And I, I, when I go back, as I take my grants, I'll, I'll take some pictures and bring it back for you guys to take a look at, but, and I'll try to find out, um, the best place to do that. I know we talked about getting that, that done, as far as that piece goes and getting equipment in there.
It'd be nice to expand on it, get picnic area with some cover of it, where people could have a birthday party there.
Yeah, now, do we wanna, do we wanna go ahead and start looking at that and, and let, um, Michael Kidd know, um, that that's what we want with this area? Um, and do we wanna go ahead and encompass it into, excuse me, uh, we need to finish first and then I'll get to you. We need to, um, make sure that, that, that he knows what we wanna do with that area and then after, after we do that, he can encompass that in. We can still make that phase one, it can still be the beginner piece of it, you know, so.
That could be something, I know the younger councilman Hamby had kind of alluded to it last time. That's something that council could work on and get done during the four, five, six months that this planning's gonna be, to go ahead and get something going for the citizens. I mean, as far as refurbishing what's there, putting in fences. As long as you stay under nine foot, any wall designer, if you have to do any wall work or anything, you don't even require engineering under nine feet.
Exactly, and because it's an established park that we're refurbishing, um, we can take equipment out pretty easily and then, oh, you're doing building backs. So it doesn't come under the same, and your dollars are not there to require the same, um, level of engineering drawings and, and all that that you would have if you were, when you're doing a new area.
When I was following what Nathan was saying on that last meeting there. Basically, Mr. Root would pick his design up at the fence. That would be your sidewalks, parking, stuff like that, that would be part of the overall design.
Yeah.
We can expand that one too, cause our property is actually.
That's what I'm saying, if we needed any wall work or anything like that, as long as you, you can do terracing to keep walls short, you don't have a fall hazard, like I said, you're not required to do the same engineering on low walls as your high walls.
What is that, what is the height for the low wall, what, what's considered a low wall?
Basically around nine feet's when you actually need, like, engineered stamped plans. If you're doing four, three, four, five, six foot high walls, most of your wall design firms can handle their own work.
So rather than going back in with say a wooden fence that we keep, it keeps deteriorating, we could go back in with a, a nice paved wall that's. You're talking about?
I was talking about like retaining walls, if the added property.
Oh, you add it to level it, I'm, I'm thinking you're talking where the fence was at.
I understand now it's bigger than what's actually fenced there.
Yeah.
Or, it's always been bigger, I guess.
I have the survey in there, I found, so I've talked to several letters, they wanna send it to all of the survey.
You may not need any walls, depending on the side, you have a little slope there, then you can do a little stuff, steps down and have it upper and lower level, depending on how a lot actually lays out. But things like that, I mean, that's a pretty easy thing to handle, and then like I said, you're showing the public, we're serious, boom, here we go.
Exactly, we'll show progress.
You're filling something in because at the best, you know, we're still looking at three, four, five months just to get a design to then start building it.
Yeah. Somebody had said to you that the church may be interested in the whole equipment.
They can go look at it, that's so rustic, I mean, it's bad business, if they wanna refurbish it, they could. I mean, they'd have to pull all the plastic off and fix all the rust and, but yeah, I think, anybody have a problem with the church having it, if we get rid of it? It'd be even better, it would be even better if the church wanted to kind of paint it up. You know, it's kinda good.
Consider trash.
Yes. De-installment? We, we pulled, yeah, that's true, um, we pulled, we pulled some of the benches and stuff out, so, um, public input, Kim, Barbara, you had something you wanna say?
Uh, yeah, so, uh, based on this discussion, so, let's say that you refurbished it, or you went forward with refurbishing that park. What if Root Design came back with feedback from the community where they wanted to include that park with the other park? Because some of the feedback, some other feedback I've heard is that, uh, mothers would like to see all of their different age kids at the same park. So if Root Design came back with feedback that's, let's move this park to closer to the other park and have a, a large, a brand-new large park for multi-age children. Uh, then how would that work based on this conversation?
Um, that, that's a question for the council, I believe that, um, I mean, and that, that very well could be, I think, one of the things here is that they're saying, this was our original park in, in the city. And there's people that wanna keep the original park in the city, they wanna keep that, it doesn't have to necessarily be a kitty park, so to speak, but it can be a, a, a small park that's there. And you still have all the other space, I mean, you're gonna have a whole city center, you're gonna have moms' walk-in sidewalks, we're gonna have park benches in areas and, you know, they can stop and let their kids play for a bit, or, you know.
Basically, we tried to design this one to accommodate, at this point, more age groups, as opposed to waiting to see.
It is, and I'll tell you something else, we, we agreed to have this school here, the school is up, it's thriving, it's doing well, they've got a lot of students. And I, I've gotten feedback from them that they really, the kids really enjoy this park down here, they'd like to see more swings, but, you know, it, it would keep them off the road to back and forth to the big park down there. I mean, that's just a, that's just a thought, but I mean, it's already, this is, this is already designated as, as parks and recreation, that the land is already designated and has been designated.
So, the thought is it'd be in addition to, it, this would be in addition to possibly a larger park that has multi-age.
Yeah, we, we already, I mean, the council's already agreed, I think everybody on council has agreed that that part down there needs, we need to add to it, it need, you know, we, it, it.
Looks like it wasn't.
It was, it's like it wasn't finished, yeah, so it's just got a small spot for younger kids, it doesn't have anything for your older kids, you know.
We're not saying not do that either.
Yeah, it's not an either or, it's just an addition to, and to refurbish something that's been a part of the city for, it, I don't know how long that park's been, is anybody else? You've been here a long time. What are you talking about it, Sue, do you know?
I'm just like, it was after the store burned.
Yeah.
But I don't remember when it burned. Cause I just, I took the store and buried it under.
Like I said, I was working down here in the late eighties and I can't remember what it was.
Well, there's a lot, I mean, there's a lot of good dialogue, but that, that'll go in, into this here, and I, I'm like you, I think if we can do something and show the people that, that you're serious about getting done, this master park plan is gonna take some time. And the reason it's gonna take time, anytime you spend over a hundred thousand dollars, of swashbucklers, you have to have engineering drawings, you have to, you have to have a project manager, you have to have, there's things you have to have. Now, we do have that, the counties agree, cause it's Cherokee County, they've agreed to work with us on it, so.
I, I think the question is, we just wanna make sure that it doesn't keep us from being able to, you know, enlarge or have a bigger and better park.
I don't think, I don't think it misses that at all.
Okay.
Keith, you have something?
Yeah, I think what Kim was trying to say, what we talked about is, uh, Root Design is, their expertise is taking all this, you know, we need a kitty park, we need this. And have them, uh, do the creative part before a shovel goes in the ground, but you don't need engineers right away, you just wanna, we're working on a concept design to stand first, right? Is that correct?
We are working on a master park plan, yes.
So a drawing, a, a concept of what, then everybody would vote on, the council would vote on, cause I've talked to at least a dozen mothers who, uh, would like to have it all combined so their middle kids and babies could be watched at the same time, rather than having two areas.
You're gonna have, everything that you need for, for a mom with, with kids that are different ages will be, you'll have your bigger park with all that in it. I mean, this here is just refurbishing what we already have established, because we do have need for it, we do have people that want it.
But isn't, uh, 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 doing work or a project in advance of, of whatever Root Design's final creative, uh, presentation is?
Not, not if this, the council and, and I are working with him to be, explain what we, what we need to happen here, I don't think that's gonna be an issue.
So he would integrate that into the overall?
I mean, you're, you're not, you know, you're not, again, we're not talking about, um, an unestablished park, this is already a park, we're just changing our equipment. Regardless if he came in and we waited for six months for him to come back with a design and say, okay, well, we're, this is a park and we're gonna refurbish the equipment, so still, the end, the end of, results the same. We're gonna redo that park, the council voted to redo the park and allocated funds to redo the park, now we just have to find out where the best place is to get the equipment. How big is our land, what are we looking at as far as how to fence that off and, and level it out if we need to, and then what, what we really have room to put there, space-wise. And he can help with all that. And he's got the con, he's got a lot of contacts, I know, because we talked about the park that they did down, um, down off of Holly Springs. They've got, it, even down there, you've got, it's sectioned out, it's really cool, I mean, I take bourbon down there too, but, um, I think it'll, I don't think it's gonna take anything away from, from the master park plan or that area where we have the new, newer park. And I think, I think there would be a lot of use to it with, with moms' walking, um, and using the sidewalks and stuff. To be a good place to stop, let your kids play if they're tired, or, or, you know.
There's tree, there's trees here.
There are trees there.
That's what I was gonna say, cause I've actually had people call and say the same thing, there's moms that'll go to this one specifically for the shade of the trees.
A shade, we looked at putting a shade over the park down here and it was, it was over fifty thousand dollars just for a shade canopy. And right now, we really would like to, to add equipment, we can't really plant trees out there because it's fill lines. So, we're, we're looking at the best way to maybe get some, some additional, um, shade in there and, you know, maybe get it added. I don't know that it'll be in the beginning, but it can definitely, as, as the years go on, we can add some, so. It's not as bad in the, in the summer months, you do have some shade, but in winter, the winter months it's awfully bright. Anybody else have anything, Miss Sue?
I was just asked, should there be a name given to all the parks, so when they're being talked about, we'd know exactly which park you're talking about? And I thought of this one, Blue Spring, for this one, that's City of Nelson. And then Keith has, uh, just suggested Weaver right there by the water tank.
Yeah, those are good, those are all good suggestions, cause we talked about, you know, and we put the, dress that up and put a half basketball court, maybe dedicating that to Miss Weaver, she did a lot of good for the city, so.
And Michael Brown mentioned that for that one, too.
So I mean, that's, you know, that, that's a good way to give back to our community, and maybe with like a monument or something that's got her history on it. I think they said she fostered seventy kids through that home. So, I think that's, that's really something. So, um, all right, I know we called, we've been calling this kitty park, but I like it, I like Blue Spring, and we can definitely call it Blue Spring.
What do you call, what do you call that one?
Uh, City of Nelson.
Oh, okay.
We call it the new park, I, when I refer to it, I refer to it as a byword.
Call it Nelson Park. I always call it Nelson Park because of the big sign.
And while we're talking about parks, I, um, I had a, I had the pleasure of meeting with William Taylor, discussing some stuff. You know, he, he was talking about, um, when we talked with Root Design, um, what kind of things would the council like to see? Um, I can know he's been a poll, but, but again, you guys have been here a long time too, what kind of things would, do you see and, or do you envision for that area? He talked about maybe since we weren't gonna have a, a baseball field, maybe batting cages in one area, maybe the basketball court in one area, you know, and then you have green space, we've got plenty of, of stuff. So, I mean, he has some really good ideas, um, to, to toss around.
That's where you would come in with the polling too, if, you know, fifty percent of the people say we want a basketball court, or we want a pickleball court, or we'd like to see this, or like I said, I had the idea about doing the batting cage. Kind of, you could refurbish the Edmund sign and use it as a backdrop, since that's what a lot of people go down there for now anyways, just to slam the ball. I mean, then you still got the spirit of the original field that was there, I know me and you have talked about that one time. Just different ideas like that, you know, like I said, when you do the polling, people say, I'd like to see this, 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 instead of just a great big flat green area with a walking trail around it, you could have basically a recreation center, pickleball court, basketball, like I said, batting cage possibly, horseshoe bed. Little fence around it to keep the kids from running through, getting hit by, things like that, there's a million different things, depending on what the people want to.
I really like the polling thing, I, I, when I talked with, um, Ethan Calhoun at North Georgia Regional Commission, and, uh, he, he was talking about that. He said they, that's how they did their, um, their whip, their work in progress, um, for their North Georgia Regional, they polled a lot of people, and I think that was back when swashbucklers first came out. And he was telling it, he said that sidewalks was the number one thing that people wanted to see inside their city. He said it was at fifty-seven percent, people voted for sidewalks, it was their number one thing.
Like I said, Woodstock has sidewalks and trails everywhere, and like, we talked about, I thought in the beginning, that's the most foolish thing I've ever seen, but you know what, I use them all the time, just working down there.
Yeah.
Just to get out and walk, to get to places, and just for exercise.
There's a lady that called that has a son, she lives around here in Kennesaw Avenue, she called, asking if we could put one there, because when he walks, if he catches the bus, it's in that blind curve. People come flying out, so if you're calling, it's on Kennesaw, when you leave, like when you're leaving town, they have the house in full.
Okay, gotcha.
It's, they, they live a couple of houses down from there, but people are calling, asking for them.
I'd like to see it going out past my house. Out further out.
You know, I, I know that the bus, the bus stops here, do we know where, what, do we know any other areas that the bus stops? I know, we had kids, I came up here early one morning or something, and there's, and when it rains, and it rains a lot, there's no work of those kids, do you?
That the buses stop like at the head of all the other subdivision areas?
I know that, don't they stop down here near the?
Post office.
Post office, though?
That's the Cherokee, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you guys for coming, um, maybe, um, I don't know, maybe we'll get something like, uh. Um, maybe, um, I don't know, maybe we'll get something like, uh, the museum all over, they've got like plexiglass or just shelters, that, just the little things, they, a couple of those are around. I know, we could probably put, well, we have a piece of property up at the top of, uh, Picken Street, right there near the corner, it's not the Marshes area, but it's right next to it. So, and, and I know they stopped, like I said, down here at the post office area.
They stopped at the top of, uh, North Avenue. Before they get to my house, if that stops.
Yeah, I, I think the one on that side, the Cherokee one, I don't have any of it picking up right now.
Yeah, I don't know.
Cause I don't, they're actually.
Maybe that's something we can pick it up and drop it off at.
Right now.
Yeah. Okay, um, school street design area with retaining walls or regrading?
We'll stay before you say anything about this, Bubba Holker actually called, cause he's gonna do the teardown community planning, and said that he was actually recommended doing a teardown of all that, and just like, he said you could get a little, like, on the one with the top wall. So just FYI.
Especially for the interim, while we're waiting on the park design, rather than putting the money back into that, I mean, that may not be a bad thing, I know, we've got marble coming out all over the place up there. Coming out of the top of it, it's been coming out. Um, did we see some that came out in the, there was some that came out there at the bottom. Has anybody been up there and looked at the wall? In the last little bit?
I think the wall that's up there now is the foundation from the gym, I think.
Okay.
I think they just kind of built.
Yeah, we didn't decide to leave the slab for a basketball.
Yeah, the slab would be there.
Well, that's the thing, if you leave the slab, then you're gonna have to do some wall work, or the slab would be buried.
He said that he could be, it could be worked around, cause he had, he knew that, that it's something just kind of food for thought.
That's what all this is, is just food for thought.
Yeah. Yeah.
And we have to know how to direct the man to do the designing.
Yeah. Um, do we want to leave that, I know we're, are we talking about leaving the slab there that, from the building, is that what we're talking about?
Yeah.
I thought in the build that it.
Yeah, until we decided we're gonna do. Are we, are we a hundred percent sure we want to leave the basketball court where it's at, or would we want to move it up?
I thought we'd just decide if we was gonna work, we got the building then, we was all gonna make that our decision.
Yeah, we had that, and, and I'd get, I would have him do a soil study as well.
With the foundation there, it should hold for a while, I don't think it has to be jumped on immediately.
Okay. Yeah, let's, let's, we'll wait and look at that.
You got, like I said, you've got, I know, I've heard Nathan say, you've got some good flat land there that was, and you've picked up land that you could do
Yeah.
Something in the design? Or is it all overall better just to slope it off and make it walkable and ballgame? Could you use that slope for seating and do your amphitheater in that area? There's a lot of different things that you could look at.
The retaining wall, the park planner had said that he recommends getting rid of that one, not building that one back.
The wooden one?
The one that's fallen hard.
Well, that wooden one's hard, but one of these faces would be, that's the worst looking building I've ever seen in town. Yeah, you were going to replace everything, probably. Poured in places and it's pretty, but it's a lot less maintenance, so you go, since one half a dozen there, the other, you go modular walls. If you get graffiti on them or anything, they're hectic clean, you can't just like paint them with a concrete wall, you can. Lose blocks off the top, kids love to topple them off.
Yeah.
Concrete walls, you harden them, make it nice and smooth, you could do murals on it, you could. You could paint with chalkboard paint, let the kids go down there and draw on it and wash it off, then if somebody happens to put some undesirable artwork on it and a gallon of paint takes care of it.
Gosh, yeah.
It's a lot of options.
Yeah, it is, I mean, that's, that's good, so.
I think John said his kid used the cord in her law, his school is here today. I really won't say it, but.
I think, and I think there's plenty of work, my only thing with where it's at right now is the water. It gets, it, it, we got two issues, one, it drains under it, which is bad, and it has caused it to bubble up. And then you've got when, when the, um, water, um, that storm drain fills up, it seeps, so you have water that comes back, that's what I was saying.
That would have properly designed wall, that the court that's there would have to come all the way out and be redone.
Yeah, and that's my thing, would we do it there, or would we do it up at the Edmunds Field area where you've got a good flat, solid surface? And like you said, maybe do one of those, maybe do a pickleball, or whatever you want, whatever the people want it.
Exactly.
So, yeah, that's, that's, that's good dialogue.
I know, we had, uh, Sue had even talked about, uh, I believe you had said you've seen mothers taking their kids to like Picken Street to ride around, bring their. Even if we decided to leave any, that'd be a great little place, you could coordinate all, draw a little racetrack on it, moms can bring their kids down there and let them ride their little things and stuff in the parking lot, I mean, there's a million different things you could do once you decide what you want to do with it.
Exactly. Nathan, any input on any of this?
It's, it was in the bin to be left, if possible.
Yeah, I want to hear it.
Yes. Yeah.
Well, the con, James and I went in, we looked, the concrete's actually in really good shape, it's just a matter of what happens when the building comes down, but they know that they're, they're gonna try to save it.
If they real gym, they may make, they pull the wall out instead of pushing in on the slab.
Um, and then, uh, any, any more, any, anything else around that, I mean, good dialogue? The last thing is, uh, any other city properties that can be added to the design, you had thoughts there?
Uh, if I keep left, I've, I've heard him talk about, uh, some property up on the hills here that belongs to the city that kind of just meanders through, that areas that we might look for, like a phase two later on. Again, I don't know, I'm asking on that one.
That could be the property that's next to Nathan's, that if we end up doing another city hall, that would be the only current location we have.
And I do, like I said, I just, with that, I've heard that there's other properties up there, or right of ways maybe, that go.
You talking about behind it?
Uh, yeah.
Yeah, it might go up the hill possibly.
There's right of ways behind the neighborhoods and behind all of our houses, like.
That's why I'm talking about things like that, that eventually could be like a phase two, walking trails and stuff like that, where we might direct him to say, okay, well, eventually we may want to do a head here to go off that way.
Yeah.
Again, I didn't know, like I said, that's just, I'd heard that there were other properties that might be useful for things like that.
There's a half acre lot on Blue Ridge, and there's a lot on the other side of, um, if you go up Blue Ridge and Picken Street, there's a house.
Yeah, actually, this was more along the lines of just city right of ways and stuff that might like connect way over from there on the hill back down this way.
I think that was what Mike Hadley was talking about a couple of years ago. In their backyard, yeah.
It's all green space where it's done.
Yeah, it is, we had a, cause Mike, Mike came up with, uh, Mike Hadley came up with some of that stuff, and people were like, yeah.
Oh, well, that's, that's, I just heard about the property, if that's something y'all already talked about, then. But we did have one lot of purpose, uh.
Marshes.
Marshes, it was very small, but.
Yeah, there was a house there.
Yeah.
And, I think it was that house or something, the city tore down after twenty-ten, maybe?
Things like that, you don't call, try to stay away.
I guess.
A lot of little pocket marks. Yeah. We're bad to get too bad. Yeah, that was spread around.
Yeah.
Okay. Are we good?
That's. We don't step out.
Feel like you, did you feel like you've got questions answered?
Yeah, I think we can, everybody think about it when we sit down on the hill. Again, we have, I think you may have already thought about an area for where this new city hall may go, or.
Only, our only piece of property we have that's in Pickens County and has to stay in Pickens County is up, up here where.
And they're digging up that, subject and all, of course, I guess, you can put the subject anywhere.
I think we've got a little over two acres there.
And that's what that property is about for, we need a new city hall. I mean, so you do a, do a two square belt, you know, you have a smaller footprint, you get more square footage.
Exactly, and I think other assets available, we could start, we could build something nice and accomplish all the things that, that, and the city would be, it would be functional for the city.
Man, there's gotta be a grand marble building, this is a simple, nice city hall.
Let's move on to new business, um, and talk about yearly appointments. First up is Mayor Pro Tim. Anybody want to nominate the Mayor Pro Tim?
James is, I feel that pretty well.
Can I nominate James?
There you go.
Are you good with nominating?
I'll, I'll.
Can we just do a list and do one vote?
Yeah, we can.
Yeah.
So, James, so, City Attorney?
Jeff.
Jeff.
James, though.
Russbridge.
That could be Jeff, but this is.
Municipal Judge, who, who did we have?
Um, Daryl Caudell.
Um, City Solicitor.
That's the same as attorney, right, that was the list that we sent you there.
Um, City Solicitor.
It would just be someone to handle any municipal thing, so that would be like a prosecutor, it can be, it's the same as the City Attorney.
Okay, Jeff, yeah, okay. And then City Building Inspector, we still, William Porter. Everybody really likes him, Financial Manager, Miranda, are you gonna have any, anybody opposed to that? No, I'm not opposed.
She's doing it.
Agent, our City Clerk.
Nope, not me.
Kelsey. Real.
I.
Okay, so I'll recount these. Mayor Pro Tim, um, I just, raise your hand up here in favor, Mayor Pro Tim, James Queen. Nathan?
We have to get a motion first.
Okay, I'm just recounting.
Okay.
Um, City Attorney, Jeff Russbridge, just wanna make sure everybody's on the same page with it. Okay. Um, City, uh, Municipal Judge, Daryl Caudell. Okay. Um, City Solicitor, Jeff Russbridge's office. Uh, City Building Inspector, William Porter. Financial Manager, Miranda McDowell. And Kelsey Real, uh, for Clerk. All right. Can I get a motion to, um, for the yearly appointments just, just mentioned?
I make a motion. Wait and go with the. James Queen, Jeff Russbridge, Daryl Caudell, Jeff Russbridge, William Porter, Miranda McDowell, and Kelsey Real.
Can I get a second?
I'll take it.
James, all in favor? Unanimous. All right. Next up is qualifying fees. Next up is the qualifying fees, um.
Give them at twenty-five dollars.
Can I get a motion to keep them at twenty-five dollars?
Make a motion to keep them twenty-five dollars.
Can I get a second?
I second it.
All in favor? Nathan? Unanimous. Next up is adding and removing check signers. So, Kelsey, um, I want you run with that one because we, we talked about, I don't know.
Well, we have, we currently have, for check, I'm technically a check signer, I try not to sign checks if I'm writing them, because for separation of duties. James is a check signer, Nathan is a check signer, and Susan was a check signer, since she's now on our council, she's gonna be removed from signing checks. Personally, I would like that, I would be the check signer. Um, just because there's times that, I mean, we just need stuff signed and rather than not sign it if I don't have to. Um, I just don't know, everybody's thoughts on that. That's kind of what I thought, can somebody have it on there?
Uh, and, I don't, I didn't really want to be a check signer, but here's the deal.
This is a check question.
I'm two minutes from here, and a lot of times during the day, she can't get anybody over here when she needs them writing to sign checks.
If I sign them, I don't have to.
I don't mind doing it, um, and I would do it as a last resort.
I don't, I don't have time.
I know. That's why, there's a lot of people, everybody work, they work out, I, I just happen to work from home and I work right there, so.
Well, a lot of times when they're done, I'll leave them on the counter, so James is the key of the office, but if, once they're done, I'll just be left on our account, helps somebody to come in and sign them, in a lot of times, that's fine, we have plenty of time to do that, but there's other times, like if it comes, like if payroll comes in late and we have some of them are still pay for checks. I've got to give the checks out at some point Thursday, cause they usually do them with their wives, whatever, it's a process right in the morning. So, there's deadlines to certain things that I, like, I have to get stuff out, and those times I know I'm gonna go back through and sign them and then leave them, it's gonna be on the line. But, um, so. Even if everybody wanted to be on there, I mean, just so for backup or whatever, to me, it would be easier.
Call for everybody, and then like I said, I don't think, should have been a phone emergency if somebody else couldn't get here, I don't see a problem personally.
Cause I know I can always run it over to her house too.
I want to call, she can run it, I mean, I can sign it, so if it's something like.
I can stalk her with the.
Okay, so can I get a motion to add council and Mayor for check signers?
And to remove Susan.
And to remove Susan.
I'll make that.
You go ahead.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, William Taylor was the first, can I get a second?
Please.
James? And all in favor? Nathan? All right.
I might motion.
A motion to.
How you get seconded it?
Who, who first did that motion, did you, David?
It's always first.
James?
And it's either gonna be James or Murphy.
I like it. And I say, go dog.